It's very warm.
Very warm.
Compared to my little cotton room.
I was reading an audiology article published in our hearing today journal saying that twenty, like twenty-six percent reduction in speech intelligibility when you're wearing a mask.
Please.
You gotta read their lips.
That's what that one person was saying. Was it yes, last week?
Yeah.
On that email?
Well, no.
In person? Up front.
He couldn't hear us.
All right.
Because he couldn't see us.
Let's have a meeting.
Okay, let's call this directors organizational meeting for Monday, June 22nd, 2020. In the back, we have the opens meeting law posted. If anybody would like to go read it for us.
Mr. Chairman, all of the current just.
Okay. We'll go ahead and start the minutes. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, those will stand as approved. Adjustments to the agenda, Sony?
Okay, I have on the consent agenda, items one A and one B is introduced by Christensen.
One A and one B?
Yep. And I do have a question of counsel for item two A. Item two A is a liquor-related item. It's one of the temporary outdoor expansions. However, it's on private property, so I was unsure if.
We still need to go ahead and approve it. We should suspend our rules and do it today.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So, um, let's see here. Items two A.
Would you run with that?
Okay.
Okay, and then items six for public hearing ordinance's second reading, I'm requesting to call items six A and six B together, and calling items six C and six D together. For ordinance's third reading for the change of zone 20009, there was a request by Mike Eckert to delay again for one more week.
You wanna do that, Tammy?
And resolutions is item eight A, ordinance's first readings nine A through nine E, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Sony. About mayor's office.
Jennifer Brinkman. Thank you for coming.
Good afternoon. I'll be quick. Just wanna say thank you for your time and attention last week as we rolled out the mayor's recommended budget. I know you have a long afternoon tomorrow, meeting with four of our final departments, and we are looking forward to working with you in a collaborative manner to put together the budget over the course of the summer. As you noticed in your packet, we got sales tax figures for the month of April, and I know we'll be seeing one more month before we put the rest of the budget together, so we know it'll be a dynamic process, and we look forward to working with you on it. Wanted to give you a brief update on the work of the Economic Recovery Task Force that the mayor put together. They've had their first meeting, and then they have put together three subcommittees who have also had their first meetings, and those three subcommittees are a local business strategies, local workforce strategies, and local sector strategies, and those are being led by Jasmine Kingsley from Huddle, Corey Sampson Vacune from Sampson Construction, and Maribel Cruz from Talent Plus. So, we're looking forward to the results of their work, and we'll keep you engaged and involved as they move their recommendations forward. And finally, just another, a quick note of something that's affecting all employees for the city of Lincoln and actually Lancaster County. We have started to roll out our new HR payroll system, the first module related to absences. We are training folks on that this week, and so that's a new way of doing business for us, and we have five additional modules that we have to roll out throughout the course of the next few months. So, just a new way of doing business for us. We're excited to move off of the mainframe and into the 21st century. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Brinkman?
Okay.
Thank you.
Not now. Maybe later. Thank you. Is Pat Lopez? Oh, there she is.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to update you a little bit on where we're at right now. We currently have 1,611 positive cases, and out of our total cases, 926 are 57.5%. Where early cases were in Lancaster County in May, so our biggest number was then. So, you're seeing a lot more recoveries at that, at this time. We have 20 hospitalizations that are Lancaster County residents, and three of these are on ventilators. Testing has been steady in the past three weeks, and we are seeing about 2,500 completed tests per week. But we still have capacity to do more, as I say every time I talk, and want more people to get in and get tested, especially if they're having symptoms. Absurd of Lancaster County cases are due to the outbreak at the meat processing plant, and 45% of all our cases are linked to a cluster, three, four, five more. I also wanted to mention that today, the Phase Three directed health measures went into effect from the governor. We also issued a directive health measure that just prohibits peddlers and still requires restaurants to use the six-foot distancing. Those are some of the major differences in there, and to wear the face coverings. So, not anything different than we've had. We're continuing to encourage the expansion of the dine-out program. We've been doing a lot of work with the cultural centers and distributing necessary resources for them to share with community members, face masks, isolation quarantine kinds of kits, and other things, and we're gonna be working with them more closely on some additional case management resources because they've really been impacted in the funding level, and they've been a tremendous assistance in working. We're working with Romeo at El Central, and we'll be doing a special clinic to move in, and we're working with Councilman Shobin. We have a meeting Thursday evening with community members. He's brought together to see how we can improve testing and outreach in that area. In addition, we're doing a lot of other things related to the face coverings and resources, housing, those kinds of things for members of the community. We just set up our new, moved our men, our temporary men's shelter to the Red Cross building, so we're really excited about that nice location. Thanks, Councilman McGinnis for your assistance with that. So, you've all touched things in various ways that have been really meaningful, and I hope you realize that, how much it's appreciated. And then finally, we're still working intensely with the schools, and I think we was good example last week of what happened. The schools announced a decision Monday, and by Tuesday, we figured out a way to do graduation. Really wanna see those events happen as much as possible when we can. So, been great working with Pinnacle Bank on several areas. We're doing a lot of event reviews in different, for different venues, and still have great working relationships with the community members on that. So, the schools are one of our biggest things we're working. The health departments across the state are working together to have some comprehensive, consistent messaging for the schools. That's all stuff there.
Yes, Tammy.
How did you know?
You reaching for your mic.
So, Pat, could you talk to us about are restrictions being lifted at all in senior care facilities, or what does that look like?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
We're still working, that is the intention of the state, to move facility, the senior care facilities, to open them up more, but in part of that involves testing, either all the staff or all the staff and the residents, depending on the situation there. So, we're actually working very closely with our centers here in Lincoln to see how we can move forward from, from that. And we should have another meeting with the state this week where we're bringing together all of the, there's multiple different entities that touch the long-term care and assisted living in it, and so just, I asked if we could just bring everybody together so we could have one discussion. So, we definitely are moving forward, and I'll give you an update next time.
Any other questions at this point, Jane?
Pat, could you talk a little bit, could you talk a little bit about the positivity rate and how that's trending? Since we're doing more testing, is our positivity rate decreasing? Is, is that what we're seeing in Lincoln and Lancaster County?
Yes, over the last three weeks, it's been decreasing, or we, we've remained pretty flat on that. And part of that's doing more testing. However, our positivity rate has increased somewhat from Test Nebraska than from where it first was, and so it's really, we're doing more testing, but we're having a large number of negatives too. But remember, testing's open to anybody now through Test Nebraska, and of course, we still see a different positivity rate when people go to Bryan and St. Eve's because those sites, they're, they're going because they have symptoms.
So, wait, so, so I guess we have different entities doing testing, so, I mean, overall trend in Lincoln and Lancaster County?
It's been gone.
Yeah, positivity is going down. Okay, that's, that's great.
Ms. Washington?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Pat, could you talk a little bit about what would need, what would happen, or what would need to occur in order for the dial to go up, like go back toward orange again? I mean, would it take a week of increasing cases, two weeks of increasing cases? What kind of?
Well, we look at a rolling average of cases and an increase in the positivity rate, so it generally would be two weeks unless we, unless we saw a huge change occurring in the community.
Okay, clusters with that, I mean?
Clusters could do it, or if we were like Omaha and we started getting 150 cases every day or two hundred, we, we would probably change sooner rather than later. But it would also depend on where those are.
Okay.
To your point about that. If, if we isolate it to one specific facility or business, then it would make a difference too.
All right. Thank you.
But we consider all of that in deciding if we, where we need to go.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Finance Department, are they here to talk about the June sales tax report, or is it just something that we received?
We just received it.
We just received it? Okay. Then we come up to boards and committee. Do you have a question?
If I could just have a moment of, wanted to address something on the agenda really quick, just to give you some background, if it's appropriate now. You will have some, the first applications for the expanded licensing area. But as you know, this is a very dynamic time we're going through, and so we talked to you about it last week. Since then, the new D H M from the state came out, which moved to 100% capacity for bars and restaurants, changed the view of the state toward our initiative. And so, when we first went to the state, we said, you know, S D Ls, they're a limited timeframe, and they're very expensive. We would like to do something that's more affordable for a longer, more stable period of time. And Hobie Rup, who is the director of the State Liquor Commission, said, well, maybe the, the answer is not to address the S D Ls, maybe the answer short-term for this pandemic would be to allow for expanded, temporarily expanded liquor footprints. And so that's what we're coming to you with, with the liquor expansions. The complication, of course, with the D H M, he was thinking, well, we'll just do this until we can go to 100% capacity, because if we can go to 100% capacity, then you don't really need the expanded footprint, which made sense at the time, sort of. But then we went to 100% capacity, and so we went back to him and said, well, technically, we're 100% capacity statewide, but practically and in Lincoln, we are not at 100% capacity from the standpoint. We're still requiring safety, those six foot. And so, he said, understand where you're coming from. I don't feel comfortable going forward, because we had this agreement until we went to 100% capacity under the state D H M. We're there, but I'll check with the governor's office. And that's where we're at today. And so, you've got these permits before you. You can consider them. You can vote on them. That's all you can really do, and then they go to the state. And once they go to the state, they could sit there for the next four, four months, and the liquor commission does nothing, or they could get an okay from the governor and say, yeah, that makes sense. We wanna keep people safe, and he could approve them by the end of the, of the week. The only thing that you can do about it is to consider the ones that come before you and say, yes, this makes sense, and approve them, and send them on to the state. But I wanted you to have that background before the hearing today.
Okay. Questions? Yes, Jane?
I'm not sure this is a question. It might be a comment. Did they take into consideration that even if restaurants are, say, 100% capacity, that consumers, people that would go to restaurants, still do not feel comfortable going to a restaurant, and would be more comfortable having that option of eating outside? And so, I mean, are they factoring that in? Just because they say it so doesn't make it so.
Well, I, I think that's a very good point, and understand that Hobie Rup has really not said no. He's just said, I don't feel comfortable without running this by the governor's office. And so, nobody's really said no, but it's more of a matter of communication is, is ongoing, and obviously, if you look at it from the governor's perspective, they've got a lot of questions, a lot of issues before them, and that's why this whole timeframe's a little bit up in the air. But I think he, he really understands the point that we're making is, you know, we wanna get to 100% serving capacity in a way that's safe. That's why we came up with this idea. That's still why we're pushing this idea, and, and, you know, I think he was very cooperative before, worked with us well. I'm hoping that he'll get the answer that we all want as soon as possible.
And wait, so you think the answer may happen by the end of this week, or?
Or by first of September. I don't know.
Well.
I mean, it's really outside of our control.
Yeah, but that doesn't, you know, our goal for doing these things, in addition to making sure people feel safer and more comfortable and having additional outdoor eating capacity, is to, to make sure that these businesses can survive until September or survive until the fall, when we certainly can't predict what's gonna happen in the fall, but at least this might give them a better chance of hanging on to their business and operations. So, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, from the city perspective, we agree with you 100%. We've been doing everything we could to move as quickly as possible, put this in front of you as quickly as possible, and you are gonna vote to suspend your rules to move forward as quickly as possible. That's all we can do, I guess officially, but, you know, the governor's always said he's, he wants to open up the economy as much as possible. I think this is an appropriate logical step in doing that.
Quick question for you. Is that on our agenda? Do you have our agenda in front?
It's two A.
But it also includes four A, B, and C?
Yes. Yes, these are, when it talks about temporarily expanding the liquor license, that's what we're talking about, temporarily.
Right.
Expanding that, that licensed footprint.
But isn't two A?
And that's why I wanted to talk to you about it before the year.
That's what I thought. Okay.
But isn't two A just a consent item? It's on the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So, we don't have to suspend.
There are different agendas.
No, no. The difference is, the difference between two A and four A, for example, is that if this was, if two A was an S D L, it could have been done administratively because it's private property. But because it is an expansion of the liquor license permit area, as, as Roy pointed out, this is something that the council needs to vote on.
Okay.
But do we, but it, but it's, but it's still under the consent item, so do we have to suspend the rules?
No.
No.
Four.
No. Well, yes, you do. You do have to suspend the rules because it's still something.
For two A?
Two A's on consent.
Was it?
Yeah.
Yep.
And I thought we were been putting things on consent to help expedite it anyway.
The way things usually happen is they go on the consent, for liquor things, they go on the consent agenda saying it's coming up next week, and then it comes up, and then we vote on it. But we're just gonna skip that process here and vote on it today.
Okay.
Okay.
Sandra, do you have a question?
I do have a question because I wanna, I, I'm trying to clarify for myself and because I have not memorized the new D H M. So, you said that, I understand about that we have a new D H M, and the state is allowing 100% capacity in restaurants. Does the state D H M still require six-foot spacing, or is that ours?
Do you wanna come on up, Pat?
Yes, it does.
Is that the county?
Well, the county's, well, Pat.
Uh, the, our one requires it. The state recommends it.
Okay.
Sorry. The state recommends it.
So, state recommends the six, we require the six, which is why we have the, enter the conundrum there.
But also, even if we, let's say, even if we didn't require
Mm-hmm.
The six-foot different distance. I had talked with the mayor and Jennifer and said, we still want to allow that because these businesses have suffered, you know, economically, and to be able to dine out, to Jane's point, and for the business economic reasons.
Right.
It makes, it makes sense, and the six-foot really shouldn't be that large of a barrier. And the govern, and the mayor and I had a call with the governor at 4:30 Friday, and this was discussed, and the governor expressed support. So, I haven't talked to, and was gonna follow up to see where the issue was and getting the approval done expeditiously.
Well, I just, thank you. I just wanted to know where it was a recommendation, where it was a requirement.
Right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff?
Victor, go.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to boards and committees.
We're gonna go to directors?
Uh, yes.
Do that later.
At this point, why don't you, does anybody have directors they wanna meet with after the meeting? Benny, who would you like to meet with?
Chief Flymeister and Mindy Rush Chipman from the Human Rights Commission.
Okay. Hopefully, they heard that.
Mindy Rush Chipman from the Human Rights Commission.
And if Lynn Johnson is available, I would meet with Lynn for a moment.
Lynn would be available? Do you have anybody, Tammy?
I just got a quick question for Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Okay.
Chief Flymeister.
And Jane?
Jeff Kirkpatrick.
Okay. And I also may have one for Liz Elliott, if she could be down here, probably in about 10, 15 minutes, 10 minutes, and we'll meet with them.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to the boards and committees. Board of Health?
Board of Health voted to delay their meeting for two weeks, and so we will be meeting this Tuesday, and I will respond with an update after Tuesday.
Okay. We had a public building commission meeting that Jane and I both couldn't attend. It's pretty basic. We did the pay requests, and it was the opening of the Hall of Justice, and there's quite a robust discussion about having to require masks and face covering. And I believe they've got it settled that legally you can't. Is that correct?
For county.
Yeah, for the county.
You can't? You cannot?
Cannot.
Cannot.
Legally, you may not require?
Not in receive the federal funds.
So, that's, that's not a requirement. That's a choice. If they want to receive the funds, they cannot do that, but they are allowed to.
Yeah, you could do it and not receive the funds.
And then forego the funds. It's a different.
That's a good.
A different legal.
Not a federal.
It's the governor's directive. Yes, thank you.
So, there's quite a robust discussion on that, and the rest of it, they're moving forward with the Hall of Justice of security entrance. Hope to have that open here next month. Okay?
I wanted to ask one question.
Yeah.
Is there damage that you're looking at?
Yeah, there was some damage, but not too much.
But it's been repaired?
Mostly just outside windows and doors.
Cleaning, cleanup of paint.
Yeah, the paint. They seemed to have gotten the paint off the statue. There were a few other things, so. Yeah, police or the sheriff department did a good job. Okay, anything else? Parks and Rec, Mr. Christensen?
Okay, we had a meeting on June 11th. It was an interesting meeting. It was the first meeting we've had in almost, I think, three months. And so, the way they did it is they had to get a quorum in the meeting room, and then other people joined by Zoom. But under the directions received from the city attorney's office, anybody that Zoomed into that meeting could not vote or participate comment-wise in the meeting, but they could watch. And so, we had the meeting. Most of it was staff reports on the Cooper Park and Park Middle School master planning. We went over an overview of the master planning for Wilderness Park users. They went, we went over incidences of graffiti on trees in Wilderness Park that seems to be a recurring problem. Let's see, pools. We know they're reopening. They have reopened under some different guidelines, but they also need, want people to understand that where in the past, you could, a group could rent the pool for a time after normal hours, and that's not being permitted at this time. Let's see, we had an update on the Rock Island Jamaica North Trail Connector Bridge, and showed us some pictures of the progress there, and also for things that are going on at Pine Wood Bowl Phase Three improvements. And that was pretty much it.
Okay. Anybody else had anything else they wanna report on? Not seeing any. Yes, Jane?
Well, I was gonna just mention the city-county commons meeting. A county board suggested that at their meeting last Thursday, that we relocate it to a larger venue because it would include all of us, plus the five county commissioners, and anyone who might just, the public is invited to attend. And so, Sean Flaherty had agreed to reach out to Amy Dickerson to see if we can have that space available. So, it would be on Monday, July 13th, and then possibly changing the time from 12:30 to 2:30 to, to continue to have a discussion from law enforcement and the sheriff's office.
Okay. Thanks, Jane.
Can I ask a logistic question? Is the meeting gonna be held between 12:30 and 2:30, or it would start at 2:30?
It would, no, it's from 12, we'd start at 12:30, and we would be out by 2:30 so we could get back here for a.
Yes, thank you.
3:00 PM meeting.
All right.
So, it might be over at, at 1:30 or 2:00, but.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for the betterment of our meeting? Anything else for the betterment of our meeting? Seeing none, then we stand adjourned.